So, welcome everyone to the August 25th Planning and Zoting Board Meeting. This is an entirely remote meeting, and as such, I'm going to read some procedures for remote participation. So this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. This meeting may be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To Zoom, you'll need to use the link in the agenda or download the Zoom application at zoom.us and create an account or use one of the call-in numbers listed on the agenda. You will need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting remote meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio and invited to speak by the chair, public participants joining by Zoom will be muted with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and eliminate background noise. For general meetings and not hearings and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the public record. Members of the public viewing the meeting on ECAT may submit questions in writing via email to dped@easton MA.us. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting, but may limit the time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email. Be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting for the public record. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings through the public testimony part of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function found under participants via Zoom or make a request with the Q&amp;A function. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. The chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which testimony may be offered, the duration of the comment period afforded to each individual or entity, and the number of individuals or entities permitted to speak. And as in any public hearing, the testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held, and off-topic commentary or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. The chair reserves the right to unthe testimony of anyone who abuses the use of the meeting room platform and to remove them from the hearing. So we're going to start with a roll call of vote for attendance. Kid? Yeah, I'm mute, Kathy.
Here.
Katam?
Here.
Zigman?
Here.
Weeks?
Here.
And Wolf is here as well. So on to the first item in the agenda. It's the continued public hearing for 95 Union Street. I believe we have a request to continue?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
The next meeting, correct, Joanne? I mean Suzanne, the 15th of September? Correct.
All right, do I have a motion?
Zigman, I'll make a motion to continue 95 Union Street to September 15.
Katam second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, Weeks?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
Katam?
Aye.
And Kid?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. So we're going to move on to a request to grant an extension for the special permit to D-Plax at 10 Morse Road. Special permit, the South Shore Habitat for Humanity, Inc. Do we have anyone in the audience, Stephanie?
We do. Dick Halverson just raised his hand. I did try to promote him to a panelist. So Dick, if you get a request to sign in, there we go. And do we need to also promote Paris Ballinger? And Dick, you need to unmute yourself?
Yes, there we go. Yes, if you don't mind, Paris would be beneficial to our case, if you don't mind.
Welcome, Mr. Halverson.
Welcome, and thank you very much for hearing us tonight. I am a member of the Board of Directors of South Shore Habitat for Humanity. We represent 32 towns and cities in the South Shore area of Massachusetts and have had a longstanding relationship with the town of Easton. We've built four prior homes in Easton and are looking forward to building three more in the immediate future. Excuse me, you may know that we have a home on Paquannicat Street, which is currently under construction. It's been slightly delayed for reasons I'll mention in a moment. And we have a parcel which is at 10 Morse Road. Both of those properties were donated to Habitat by the town of Easton's Affordable Housing Trust, and thank you for that.
Pardon me, Mr. Halverson, I'd like to interrupt you for just a moment. Could you state your full name and address?
My full name is Richard Halverson. I live in the town of Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Excellent. Just to give you a heads up, by the way, your video is not on.
Okay, let me see.
Awesome. There we go. All right.
In any event, Habitat, as you know, we are a nonprofit organization. We have limited resources, as most of our resources, funding resources, come to us through donations and grants, oftentimes specifically earmarked for a particular property or home that we might be building. We have a very limited staff, which consists of about six full-time employees and a small handful of part-time employees that help us build the homes that we build. We have been, in the last few years, building two homes a year. That's been about the limit of our current resources. We'd like to build more, and hopefully we will soon, but two seems to be about what we've been able to handle. This past year, we built two homes in the town of Cohasset. One is currently occupied. The other one will be occupied by the middle of September. The prior year, we built two homes in the town of Hangum. During the course of both of those builds, Hangum and Cohasset, we ran into some significant unforeseen problems, not the least of which was unforeseen ledge in the ground under the Cohasset property, which delayed that project several months. We had similar problems in the town of Hangum the year before in 2023 and early '24, and all of those problems have served to stretch our resources to the limit. We have committed to a homeowner for the Paquannicat Street Eastern property, so that we have a homeowner selected, and we are trying our best to get back on that project, get it built during the winter and turned over to that new owner sometime in the spring of 2026. We have another opportunity, which was kind of laid in our lap, which requires immediate attention, and that's an existing house that we acquired in the town of Easton. And the reason I say it's a bit of a dilemma is the...
What was that? Abington, Dick?
I'm sorry, Abington. The existing house needs significant repairs and upgrades, and we don't think that we can let it sit for any lengthy period of time without working on it and repairing it so that it doesn't deteriorate any further. Long and short of all of that is that our financial resources and our staffing resources have simply not allowed us to tackle this property on Morse Road. We are committed to do so. We have a deadline under the current special permit of November 16th of this year to commence construction. We also have another permit, which is outstanding with a deadline, and that is a Wildlife Endangered Species Permit, which will expire in January of 2026. We intend to comply with that permit by removing the necessary trees and vegetation from the site and performing some preliminary grading. And we have been told that that activity will comply, will trigger that permit to extend automatically. So we are here tonight asking you for a two-year extension to commence construction on the Morse Road project. I am certainly hoping that we will begin commence construction on that significantly before that two-year timeframe is up, but I can't promise that. So again, we would desperately like to get this project underway, but our current resources simply don't allow us to do so. We're not like a for-profit developer. We can't simply go to the bank and borrow a large construction loan and build this house. It simply doesn't work that way for us. So that's the bottom line. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Halverson. Board members, does anyone have any questions?
I just have one question. So the site hasn't been touched yet, so it's in the condition in which it was originally purchased?
Correct. The only things we've done there are the obviously survey work and perk tests for the septic system. No other work has been done on the site.
Okay. And in the meantime, while you're waiting to begin work, are you checking in on the site just to make sure that there's no dumping? I don't know if that's an issue in this neighborhood or anything like that?
We are checking in on it regularly, and dumping has not been an issue to this point.
Anyone else? Or do I have a motion? I'm sorry, Ellen?
Oh, no, I was just going to say I'm familiar with the site. It's pretty heavily wooded.
Do I have a motion from anyone?
Motion.
Motion to approve the request, Katam.
Second, kid.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Zigman?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Katam?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. Mr. Halverson, Mr. Ballinger, you have your extension.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciate your consideration. Good night.
Good night.
All right.
All right, moving on, we have some ZBA requests for comments. The first one is for the special permit for 135 Elm Street. We're just going to vote whether to support or not support the use. At this time, this is not the site plan review. That once approved or not approved by the ZBA, that'll come back to us for the site plan. Do we have any comments?
I don't know. There's a lot of material in the binder. I read through it. It all looked pretty straightforward. I don't know, Stephanie, did you have any thoughts about that?
No, we, so Ellen, we had a, yeah, Suzanne included everything, which, again, it was a lot. We have had a design review team meeting with the applicant prior to their submitting their application for the use permit, the special permit. Really, just basically what the Ames family is looking to do is further activate that home, which no one is living in on a regular basis, but is very well-upkept, and use it as a high-end event venue for weddings and other celebratory-type events. The entrance for visitors to the events, guests, will be from Elm Street, and the equipment will all be brought in from Main Street. We did walk the site, the design review team, and they may need to do some enhancements to the road to accommodate the vehicles that will be bringing in tents and chairs, tables, that type of thing. But other than that, there's really no alteration to the site. It's all temporary use. The plan is that they'll bring materials in a few days before the event, get everything set up, including high-end portable toilet facilities. And then after, and they will be laying down temporary flooring to protect the grass surface. And then within a day or two of the event, all those materials will then be removed by the equipment providers and stored off-site at those facilities until the next event that they have.
Does that benefit the town in any way from a revenue perspective, or is it just permanent?
It will primarily in alcohol licenses, any Board of Health fees that they need permits, that type of thing. I don't think the meals taxes apply because the food is going to be prepared off-site and then brought to the facility. But it certainly does activate the area and hopefully brings potential overnight guests. We don't have a hotel, but you know, that's always something that is being talked about with the increased use over at Stonehill of visitors due to their designation as, and I'm not going to get this completely right, I know Kathy and you folks will better do this, but they're a Class D athletic school?
Division one?
Division, yes, there we go. And you know, they're anticipating building a new arena. This is for hockey and having more visitors come in. They're also, the Father Peyton is, as I understand it, even closer and on a clear path to be, and again, I'm not going to get this quite right, I'll say declared a saint, and that will generate more visitors to that area. So what it does do is makes Easton more of a destination place for tourism in one form or another.
Stephanie, can I ask you a question? The specific requirement is to allow them to proceed without the plot plan. Now, being a special permit, I will assume that our regulations and bylaws require a plot plan, and they want to be released from that. And that is the subject actually brought up to us. What will a plot plan provide that is not provided on the current information that was given with the request?
Yeah, so it'll be up to each board. So you're being asked to comment just on the special permit request, which is going to the Board of Appeals. They also want to see plot plans. And then when it comes for site plan review, the planning board generally gets a plot plan. So both boards will be asked to waive that requirement. And really, I think the level of detail is more contouring, showing what existing conditions look like and then what post-conditions look like onsite, providing for stormwater management drainage, because of course, most projects, there is land disturbance. There are new structures, permanent structures that are going to be put in place that require that type of mitigation and attenuation. In this case, this is really a temporary use. The, it's equipment that's being brought in. The toilet facility, again, it will probably be, I think some of you probably have seen those, and I use the word trailer. They don't really look like trailers, other than that they're on wheels, but they kind of look like a sophisticated outhouse with multiple stalls or rooms. They're actually small rooms. So the level of detail that you would require if there was land disturbance, there was stormwater management that was going to be required and installed and constructed on the site, you don't need for this project. Does that help?
Does this trigger any type of outdoor dining or entertainment?
Outdoor recreation is what they're seeking.
Okay, so that's a category unto itself?
Yes, and you know, so we don't really have like an event space use, and both the prior building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, and current and I have had conversations about this and have regularly agreed and gotten concurrence from town council that the outdoor recreation, this fits in that category of use.
Have there been any abutter concerns, you know, with noise or late-night noise?
Abutters will be notified for the special permit, so we may anticipate that. They, on the map that they, the concept plan that they've shown, they actually include an abutter distance for sound to kind of illustrate how sound would travel. So that's being taken into consideration.
I mean, it's a big site, but you know, on a quiet night, you can hear Gillette Stadium concerts almost at my house.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I guess, yeah. You know, you can hear the train, the stone train coming down the right-of-way bed. It's a very bizarre... When I first started working for the town, I thought that was very eerie. But yeah, so yes, that's certainly a consideration.
And trying to figure out a summary of this is you're saying that a site plan review with a proper drafting of plotting and everything for this site does not provide any valuable information for what this is. Therefore, but I wonder if there is something in between a full plan of the plot versus something that maybe they already provided. I wasn't able to read that.
I think...
But that will satisfy the minimum for, you know, to see that things are in order.
Yeah, I think, and this is my thought, Amos, and again, if the board feels they have additional things they'd like to see, if it moves to site plan review, then we can ask them for that. Flow of traffic in and out, how vehicles are going to come in. They've told us that they're going to bus in guests, for the most part. There may be people who are also driving, but primarily, people will be picked up off-site somewhere and then ride a bus to the event. And the buses will be parked onsite while the guests are attending the event. And then they will, again, they'll leave going back out through Main Street. And then you have the equipment that's going to be coming in off of Main Street and then going out. So I think traffic is something, and the flow of traffic through the site that the board would want to be very interested in and understand the numbers of vehicles that are expected to come through the site, particularly at any congested time, you know, when is the concentration of vehicles arriving? That type of thing, and they can show that on plans and the traffic movement through.
So if we were to recommend with a condition that on the review, there will be information about traffic and noise, these are the two things that I hear. Maybe there are more, but we will recommend to exempt them from a plan, but not from coming back and explaining the impact of this idea on the town, traffic and noise and other issues. That might include also an impact to the environment as well.
Yes.
Stephanie, do you know why? I mean, it seems like a relatively simple thing to provide. Do you know why they're asking for an exception?
Well, to prepare a plan, it's generally an added expense.
Yeah.
It is really what it is, Joanne. And, you know, even just a few years ago, to get a plan was a few thousand dollars, and it's quite a bit more, and it's quite a large site.
I guess my only hesitation here is that if we provide this person with an exception, what if somebody else comes forward and wants an exception? And then where do you draw the line between, yeah, where do you draw the line between who gets one and who doesn't?
Well, you know, this was some guidance to me years ago from town council, and it happens to be council we have today, that, you know, people are very concerned about precedent, and understandably, but every situation is unique, and you need to weigh it on its merits each. If everybody just came in and said, you know, we're building a three-story building, and we're clearing an acre of land, and we want an exemption on requiring a plan, well, that wouldn't make sense at all, and it would be very different from this project where there's really no land disturbance. But that being said, if the board feels that you need to see a landscape, I mean, I'm sorry, a land-surveyed plan, you know, that's the board's prerogative. It's in the regulations and...
And I just have one other question, too. I've been going through the stuff, and I might have missed it, but are they paving the proposed parking spaces?
No.
No, because it looks from the picture like where the tennis court used to be. It looks like it's maybe tree-covered now? So I'm just wondering if they're planning...
We were told there will be no tree clearing.
Okay. So presumably, however they arrange the parking, they're just going to use permeable, either grass or what's there, or maybe some gravel or something?
No, they're just planning on parking people on the existing surface and areas that are already cleared of trees, but are generally grassed. And I think on the plan, there may be one area that is gravelled, but they're not planning on bringing in new material, is my, again, was my understanding from our meeting. But these should all be things that the board should be discussing and exploring when they come for, when if they come for site plan review.
And then the other, oh, sorry.
What happened now with them? They need to come back for a review or not?
They, so they need to go to the Board of Appeals for the special permit. If the Board of Appeals grants the special permit for the outdoor recreation use, then it has to come back to the planning board for site plan review.
Okay, so they are coming back, doesn't matter what. So the question is how they are coming back. They are coming with a plot and the survey, or they are coming without that? And in that case, can we tell the Board of Appeal to establish conditions about what they need to bring to the review for us?
You can, in your response, indicate that you support it, and when they come for site plan review, the board wants to see a survey plan. Is that, did that answer your question?
No. So they need to come back and tell me how they impact the environment, the noise and the traffic.
But that's all part of site plan review. They would, the site plan review...
You don't necessarily need a survey for that.
So I guess the question is, Amos, this is just, we're just recommending or not recommending kind of in supportive use, and then they'll come back for the site plan review, at which point we can ask all these specific questions. Do I have that correct, Stephanie? Okay. Is that what you're asking, Amos?
Yeah. But no, I'm asking you return it to the Board of Appeal with the condition that when they come to review this, they have to have this, this, and this. If not, we don't even hear them.
Well, I think they would come with what you're normally expected to come with for a site plan review, so...
And they might not get approved, so in that case, it's moot.
Yeah. Just following up really quick, Joanne, did you have another question?
Yeah, just so if, let's say, in, I don't know, five years' time, this is a huge success, and they decide to turn it into a more permanent venue, like actually expand parking and put up a permanent tent, et cetera. At that time, can we request the plot plan then, or are we forever waiving it as you'll never have to provide it again?
So when, if that happens, that's an expansion of the existing approved use. They would have to come back again for site plan review. And yes, you absolutely would be expecting that they, again, if they were converting land and, you know, paving areas, putting in stormwater, putting in permanent structures, you should fully expect to have a plot plan. And in detailed plans.
I think I missed the issue around the buses. Are they doing that because there's no parking and they want to minimize traffic? Because that's unusual to have people bust into, you know, a wedding or an event like that.
Well, as I understand it, these are going to be elegant buses. You know, the these are not just, they're they're going to be very stylized coaches. And I I think you know, I, Alan, quite frankly, I don't know. My husband was a caterer. We did what we thought were some high-end uh weddings, but I don't think they're of the same caliber as that they're expecting here. Um. I think it's to minimize, it is to minimize traffic onto the site and to minimize the amount of parking that they need.
Hmm.
Um, no one has asked the question, and maybe you kind of got the message in my saying that people arriving, the guests will be coming through the gatehouse lodge entrance off of Elm Street. But they're very, very protective of the property.
Hmm.
And very concerned in making sure that it retains all the character and quality that it has today.
Would would smaller venues just use the house, or would they also have outdoor tents and things?
They're not using the house. It will all be outdoors. They plan on making the house available. Maybe they said in the future, maybe night before stayovers for very limited members of the wedding party, probably, you know, what was implied was like maybe the the bride and maybe her her immediate entourage. Um. And then at some point, they might use more of the house, but that's not in the cards today.
I see, I understand. They do this down at Plymouth Plantation, uh, well Plymouth, whatever they call it now. I'm not supposed to say that word, sorry. Um Plymouth, um Patuxent, I think it's called now. I went out to a wedding down the avenue. They have the tents and all of that stuff. Um, it was quite nice.
Yeah.
That's a very remote area, though, so.
Mm hmm.
Um, no, I mean, I I think in general, it's it's probably, as you said, good for the tourism, you know, in the town, um, you know, on a on a macro basis.
Yep. And it and again, it keeps that property activated in its current condition and state as as a um as as an estate.
Quick. Yep, quick question. Um, in reading through the the design review that y'all did, there there is a comment from the DPW about needing to pave and widen the road, the access road off of Main Street. Would that impact our decision about doing this this variance?
So it's not, it's not a be, oh, you mean the waiver of the.
The waiver of the the plot, the plot.
Yeah, we would need to see a plan for paving the road.
Okay, so is that kind of separate from what we're talking about tonight?
It wouldn't be the full site. It would just be the road itself.
Just the road.
Yeah, I wasn't in, yeah, I mean, I I wasn't focused, personally, I wasn't focused on the waiver of the um land surveyed plan, because I felt that would need to come with the the um site plan review application.
Because that feels like like something we would want to have.
Yes.
Because it's right along the uh Langwater Pond, too.
And it's impervious surface, they.
Yep.
To.
It's gonna be stormwater runoff, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so that's something we can address during site plan review.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, even if we did give this variance.
Waiver.
Waiver, sorry.
But I, you know, the, yeah. The board doesn't have to vote on a waiver tonight of the plan. I I wouldn't lock myself into that. This is really just, uh, is the board in support of the use? Um. In support with certain trepidations or concerns or not at all in support.
I would make a motion.
I I support with with concerns. Obviously. Especially if it's not going to be a very detailed plan for review when they come for a special permit. So I have concern.
Um, so uh, would you like to make a motion for concern? Actually, Jo- uh, Joanne, I think was trying to make a motion first, and then Amos, you're welcome to kind of jump and amend it if you like.
Well, what was the motion?
I don't, then, that's what I'm asking, Joanne.
So I was going to make, so I was gonna make a motion to um support the use of this property. Um, but I was going to add what Amos said, that when they come back for site plan review, they come with a full explanation for traffic, um, what exactly they're going to be doing, that sort of stuff.
And and when environmental impact and noise pollution. Specifically, and maybe others, but.
Um, Suzanne, is that enough for a motion?
I I think the motion has to be conditional on if it's approved, not when they come back, because it may not be approved.
Yeah.
I think we're just.
Uh, correct, that's correct. If the waiver is approved, this board recommend condition for the site plan review in which they will need to explain the environmental impact, the uh, the noise, uh, pollution impact and yeah, and the traffic.
That's it.
And I think light, light pollution as well. Sorry, Joanne.
Stephanie, are we, do we have to move on the plot plan tonight? Or do we just have to say whether, I think it's just about supporting the use of the property?
Right.
And then if the variance is granted, then they come back to us, then we would have to waive the plot plan, right?
Right.
Right?
And it's a special, not a variance, a special permit for the use. And yes, I, yes, you're not deciding tonight to waive any of the standards for site plan review.
It's just whether or not we
to the uses of the. Yes, generally support, yes, yep.
So in that case, I'd like to revise my motion um that the board supports the use um with concerns about traffic, noise. What were the other ones?
Environmental impact.
Environmental impact, and that we hope those would be addressed when it comes back to us.
Who's the second?
Second?
All right, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh Weeks?
Aye.
Sigmund?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Wolf is an I as well. Um, okay, so we'll send this along to the ZBA. Uh, next is a variance for sixty Pond Street, uh Stephanie.
Okay, so this is a repetitive petition that is going back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The board may remember that you actually were requested to comment on a repetitive permit back several months ago. This originally was um for a variance request. Somehow I just closed my, I'm sorry, let me make sure. I closed my binder. You know, I have to reopen it. Um. So they were proposing an addition, a carport off the back of the house. There's a porch proposed on the front of the house. The carport was going to be eight inches from the abutting property line. Um, that was the original variance request. The Planning Board voted in support of the request at that time. The Board of Appeals denied that request. The applicant came back a few months or short period of time after that with a revision with, I think it was, um, they increased the setback on the carport to one and a half feet. They still had um a reduced setback on the porch. The Planning Board voted to support that repetitive petition. The zoning board, the night it was going to be heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals, the applicant withdrew it without prejudice. Now it's back before the Planning Board. I mean, I'm back before the Zoning Board of Appeals as a repetitive petition. And they have eliminated, as I understand it, the carport, so there's no backyard um nonconformity. But they still have a setback nonconformity for the porch. So that's what they're presenting, they want to present to the Board of Appeals. Under Chapter forty A, the Zoning Act, in order for the Board of Appeals to be able to consider a repetitive permit, the Planning Board has to consent to the repetitive petition moving forward. That doesn't mean you approve of it. It just means you approve and consent to it moving forward. You can also, then, if the board so votes, to vote in support of the variance under this repetitive petition.
So it's two votes?
Yes.
I see.
Uh, board members, comments, questions?
Do we know the background on why the ZBA uh denied it on the first round? Was it because of the tight setback on the carport?
I believe so. Suzanne, do you? Yeah, it was inches. Yeah, it it was. As I said, I I I think it was eight inches from the property line.
I tried to look at it on Google Maps today. It looked like there was something back close to the rear property line and uh there's, there is no existing carport. Were they going to expand it, or is there one there?
Is there a garage, Suzanne? I.
I think they tore it down.
They tore it down, correct.
It's probably.
It's not there now.
Yeah, okay, that that's what I was seeing. It must have been an old, an old Google Map um photo.
Hmm.
But then the street view showed the property, I think, under construction. Had a stormer going in, um, but quite a bit of siding being replaced, so. Um, that must have been up to date, probably just not the satellite, uh.
No, they they threw it down and they wanted to build a new one. That's when they got in trouble.
Okay, I got it.
Um, if there are no more uh questions, comments, do we have the the first vote needs now to be, Stephanie, a vote on the repetitive petition?
Yes, a consent, a vote to consent to um uh allow the repetitive petition to move forward. To be considered is actually the language, to be considered.
All right, uh, do I have?
Motion, motion to consider the repetitive petition on sixty Pond Street.
And then second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Ketum?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Sigmund?
Aye.
Weeks?
Uh, aye.
And Wolf is an I as well. So we have passed the first part. Now we need the second motion to either to support or not support the variance to sixty Pond Street. Did I get that correct, Stephanie?
Yes.
All right, excellent.
Uh, do we have to? We 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 can send it like this and have the the Board of Appeal deal with it. We we don't have to recommend.
That's also correct. You don't have to recommend or not recommend, you.
Got abstained, right? I just.
Yeah, just send it back, discuss it. Uh, I I'm more inclined to that than to start recommending something that that is a variance. I don't think is our place to approve a variance from the board point of view. I I'm not sure I understand regulation that well, but I I don't think it's our privilege to to do that.
Is this the one that was looking for the 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 front porch and the side deck?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, although the way it's written, oh, good lord, this is a little confusing. Because the way my report is written, it's that the Planning and Zoning Board must consider the repetitive petition and vote whether to consent to a favorable action on the petition by the Zoning Board of Appeals. A positive vote for members is required, so. Let me pull up.
Favorably, favor, favor to to discuss, not favor to approve.
Um, let me just pull up forty A again and look at it. I spent hours going on this, over this, the first time it came to the board.
That that neighbor is very packed.
Um, well, Stephanie's looking, uh, Joanne, did you have a comment?
Well, yeah, I was just, Stephanie might be clarifying this, but um in looking at it, in the Stephanie's report, it refers to dimensional relief for the front yard setback to construct a mudroom and a sun deck. But the map itself only shows a proposed porch.
I thought the, the mudroom is eight Joseph.
Joseph.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Sorry, guys.
Similar, I got confused.
Those days.
I'm sorry, what was that, Joanne?
I'm looking, ignore me, I'm looking at the wrong plan.
Oh.
They both involve porches.
Yeah, they were similar.
Okay, so this is so no appeal application of permit which has been unfavorably and finally act upon by the special permit granting authority shall be acted favorably upon within two years after the date of final unfavorable action unless said permit granting authority or um by a unanimous fines, by a unanimous vote. Specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based and describes such such changes in the record of its proceedings, and unless all but one of the members of the Planning Board consents thereto and after notices given to parties at the time and such of the can uh proceedings. So it looks like you have, you have to find that there are material, specific material changes in the conditions. So in each case, even the application that they withdrew without prejudice, the the specific and and material changes were that they had reduced the nonconformity by increasing the setbacks.
So in this case, the material changes would be the elimination of the carport and the um setback, um, uh, so removing that entirely and now it just being the the um deal with the the front porch, correct?
Yes.
So do we have to revote to find it materially signif- was it materially significant? I forget the language, I'm sorry. This is one of the occasions where we really needed a lawyer as the chair, and I.
Well, it's just that the, yeah. So it's I I have interpreted this, and I I had worked with Jay on this previously. Final and unfavorable action was uh fines by a majority. Specific material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based. So that's, that's really what your consent and and Planning Board consents thereto. So I take that as the consideration of the board, the Board of Appeals of the repetitive petition. of the repetitive petition.
So in essence, we're saying they've made enough large scale changes that we're gonna um, we agree that this is kind of, it's it's not repetitive anymore. Um, it's something different and listen to hear it again.
Mm-hmm, essentially, mm-hmm.
Complete non-legally is, I'm sorry. Um, so should we move to kind of, can you avoid the last vote or do we just revote or how do we do that piece?
I'm sorry.
Do we, do we need to make a new motion? Does the one that, the motion we just voted on carry through or how do we?
I I think the motion that you made carries.
I think we're good.
Yeah.
Uh, to decide that it is material uh and
Right.
therefore it can be re- reexamined.
And and that the board consents to it being considered.
Okay, so are we good to move on to the next one or we need to do another vote?
I think we'd only need another vote if we wanted to recommend or not recommend the change to the Z B A.
Which I think what Amos was saying, he thought it was their purview more than ours.
Okay, well, if we're not required then to make a recommendation, that's fine, let's move on.
We just kick it over to them without comment, basically?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, basically, you, the board is consenting to the zoning board of appeals. Considering the peti- petition, the repetitive petition.
I think that sounds pretty fair. Um, okay, so we're going to move on to, if every, uh, the board members are good with moving on. Anyone wanted to further discussion?
I'm good.
Oh. Um, so now we've got the variance at eight Joseph Road, uh, Stephanie?
I'm sorry?
It's okay, I'm so sorry.
Oh, eight, eight Joseph Road, yes, sorry. Um, so a- again, this is a dimensional variance request. And it is for the front yard setback. Um, they meet the side yard setback. And this is so that they can add an addition in a mudroom and it it seems kind of change how the house is entered into. And, yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, board members, any questions or comments?
Just need to look at the plan again. I can't remember which, this was the one in the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Yes.
And the relief was on the front setback?
Yes, the front yard.
Oh, I remember this one. Yeah, it looked like the other one. It was some.
And I.
Well, the deck looks like it's on the, oh, I see, the deck wraps around a little bit, okay. I missed that when I first looked at it. I thought it.
Yeah, it it was a little confusing.
So it makes the eighteen eight, which is already non-conforming slightly less, cause it's what is that, an additional uh like three or four, three feet or something?
So they lose just under, so the current front yard setback is twenty, the minimum front yard setback is twenty five feet. The existing structure is twenty feet, which was built in nineteen seventy five, it says. They also say in their narrative that it was in conformance with the zoning requirements at the time when the front setback requirement was twenty feet, but I'm not finding that to be the case. I have the zoning bylaw from nineteen seventy three to nineteen eighty five. And the front yard setback was still twenty five feet at that time.
Oh, okay.
But it, so it's it's a pre-existing nonconformity and they're reducing it by one point two feet. Further reducing it by one point two feet.
Yeah, the only, the only dimension I see is the eighteen eight to the water shut-off valve, not to the edge of the pavement. But then there's a building setback line and I I don't see a dimension to that. It does look like, okay, I see it now.
It's fourteen four from the shed. There was that one on the left. But not entirely clear.
So you are, you are actually correct. Uh, Alan, that they they put eighteen point eight feet, but it is to the water shut-off. It's not to the edge of, well, it is, it's not to the edge of the cul-de-sac layout.
Well, it's a little confusing, cause there's a dotted line that says building setback line and that radius is bigger than the edge of the pavement. So either the cul-de-sac didn't get fully paved or there's.
Well, that's what, that's clearly what happened here, that the, so you have the layout which is larger than the paved area.
Right.
The paved, so it's, it's definitely further, it appears. It it appears that the house is setback further than eighteen point eight feet from the paved area.
Correct. All right, I see it now.
So what is it? It can be. It can be that the distance from the house to the cul-de-sac that was planned and not built, I I don't know what what the situation is yet, is twenty. But outcome eighteen, that is shorter than that, goes farther, farther out. It 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 doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's the shut-off valve. I I think you gotta look at the dotted line, uh, the dotted arc that says building setback line is twenty five feet. That, that's what it must be, cause it says it on the uh, on the side of the print. And I think what Stephanie said was uh, it doesn't look like it ever met the twenty five feet.
Right, it didn't.
But I I I I blew out the uh, the drawing. It says twenty feet to the cul-de-sac. And and that is smaller twenty, is smaller than eighteen point eight, they are pointing to the water shut-off valve. So something is wrong on this plan from the point of view of the dimensions that they put in. So they they don't correspond to the the, to their own uh markup, so you really need real dimensions from somewhere that you don't have.
I'm confused as to what you're saying, Amos.
If if you blow out, it says twenty and there is a arrow from the house to the circle of the cul-de-sac. Says twenty. Do you see that? There's oil.
Yeah, yes, I do, yes.
So on top of that, it's a eighteen point eight, that is less, but it goes farther away. It goes beyond the circle of the cul-de-sac. And that can be, that's so the proportions or the, the scale or something is wrong here.
Uh, I mean, the way, the way I read it is the building setback line shown i- i- is on the official property marker. And it's fifteen feet, as you see it narrower on the side, and then the radius sweeps around where the cul-de-sac was supposed to be paved. The cul-de-sac just didn't get paved to the extent of that land. But I mean, that's the way I read it, and that that dotted line that's a radius is twenty five feet. From the uh, the the solid arc that goes right through the paved driveway, which is apparently where the cul-de-sac was supposed to be paved to.
Well, it's the cul-de-sac layout. Um, and and it doesn't necessarily, so what this isn't showing is the level of detail you'd see on the road as to what the actual paved area was. Um, you know, the layout generally does go a bit beyond the paved area.
Well, it that that's a detail, what, I I I want uh, something that is higher up on the is is the plan cul-de-sac is what we need to take in consideration for setback? Or the current other thing that is?
No, you, the, it has to be from the what, the layout, because if the road would be to to be expanded, it could be expanded to the extent of the layout.
What layout?
So we're looking at the the dotted line that says building.
So hold on, let me share my screen.
I'm totally confused.
That would be helpful, cause I can travel them back and forth.
Hold, hold, hold on.
Where is the setback measured from? That's my question.
The planned land where the cul-de-sac could have been paved to.
Correct, the layout. So.
Then I'm right. All the proportions here is wrong.
Okay, so right, this is the the layout.
Yeah, there's property markers on that line.
Yep. And the setback should be from the layout, not the paved area. And you can see, they show twenty feet. Ignore that eighteen point eight. I understand why, um, I I understand what you're saying. Amos, that that can, how can that be eighteen feet when it goes further than the twenty, but the twenty feet is what the current setback is from the house to the road, to the the layout of the road.
Yeah, but you understand me, I don't trust this uh drawing.
I I I don't think that the the drawing is off, I it, that unless you're talking about this.
How that.
Red marking.
I mean, right, when you have two numbers that don't.
Okay, I think really the question is is the board supportive of an, an increase or dec- uh uh, an increase in the nonconformity?
I mean, if you look at the setback line, that small little spot that they're looking to add is actually within the setback. The front of the house violates it, if you look at the way the dotted line sweeps through.
Right.
There's only a small part of that red extension on the front that is encroaching, very small.
Right off the driveway, the big driveway.
And not to get back to the eighteen thing at all, but I believe that's just the step part when you hit the front part. But the the addition to what comes juts out in front of the house measured to where the solid line is, where the cul-de-sac should have been and never was.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, that eighteen eight dimension has has no place on this plan. It's just to a water shut-off valve.
Yeah.
Yeah. It.
I mean, I would look at the dotted line that says building struck setback line, which is a twenty-five foot radius from the actual boundary uh, of the cul-de-sac, whether or not it's paved to it. And it shows that the building encroaches on the uh setback line.
Is it, is this been done by a surveyor and is uh is signed on this plan?
I believe so, yeah.
Looks like it.
Yep.
Yeah, so it says the front of the porch is enroaching into the front of the setback.
I don't have a problem with it increasing its nonconformance, because I feel like it's not going to, like, it's, the nonconformance is in front of the paved driveway, so it's not like it's a safety issue or an aesthetic issue or really anything else. That's why I think it, I don't think it's a big deal.
Motion to recommend.
Second, Sigma?
All right, uh, any further discussion? Uh, seeing none? Uh, Kit?
Aye.
Sigma?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Wolf is an I as well. All right, um, moving on to meeting minutes. Does anybody have a chance to read them?
Yes, motion to recommend the uh, uh, minutes as presented.
Second, Weeks?
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Sigma?
Aye.
Ketum?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
And Wolf is an I as well. Uh, moving on to chair updates, I am not the chair, uh, so I have no updates except to say, I'm just again congratulations, Stephanie, um, um, uh, your upcoming retirement. Um, I am incredibly pleased to have chaired your very last meeting. It is an honor. Um, and uh, thank you, just seriously, thank you, uh, from the bottom of my heart. Um, and then planning director update, Stephanie, it's you.
Okay, so first, I'll be retiring the end of the week, in case anybody hasn't picked up on it. And thank, thank you, Mickey, so much for the kind words. Um, I will again state, it has just been a pleasure working with this board. I think we've done incredible work together. You folks have really put in a lot of hard work over the last couple of years and thank you so much. It's been an honor working with you. Um, my two updates, so the master plan update final draft will be going out to you folks probably before the end of the week. And then you will be receiving a presentation on the fifteenth. So at your next meeting. And then I wanted to give everyone a sawmill update, which was in your packet.
Um, sorry, Stephanie, can I just ask a quick question about the master plan?
Yes.
Is that going to be? Are you gonna be voting on it at that meeting where it's presented to us or is it just an informational?
I, I think it's just, it's to get comments on it, that we're sending it out ahead of time. And then go through, um, do have B S C, I'm I'm sorry, I forgot that Joanne is one of the co-chairs, shame on me.
Okay.
Um, and we'll be present, or we'll be presenting it. I think this is what Wayne and I had talked about, the chairs. Um, and Wayne and the new director will be there. Wayne Bytler is our community planner and he has been uh, a very valuable resource and very engaged in this process. Um, as I had been planning for retirement at the end of May and then extended it, so. Um, it will be to go through it and get feedback and comments from the board. And then those comments will be incorporated. There's going to be a presentation, as Joanne knows, to the select board for the same purpose. And then um, we'll be soliciting comments from the public. Those will, comments will be incorporated as appropriate and make sense for the plan. And then the final draft will be distributed and at that time the planning board does need to vote to adopt it. Okay, then the sawmill update is, um, I know a lot of people have been asking questions. I will go through kind of how the phases of development are going and then share with you what's happening with the traffic lights, which I know everybody, everybody uh, in including the board are very interested in in understanding. So what we've heard from Mr. Lincoln. Basically, there are three phases of this project in construction. Phase one is the east side. That's what's currently under construction. You can see new housing being developed and also the clubhouse has been constructed. Um, there is still quite a large pile of uh, structural soil that is needed for the rest of the project. Um, it will, that will be moved and I'll talk in a second about that. Right now, they have a model home that's been completed and furnished in that there are four homes under construction and essentially weather tight. I was out the other day, um, just taking a look around and it looked to me like there were at least, I, I know there are at least two homes that are occupied and possibly a third. But the let's see, seven of which are sold. Let's see, seven of which are sold, so, uh, seven are sold, so I, there definitely look to be at least three that were already occupied. The flood map, as you may recall, that was a big part of the processing and a lot of. It took a very long time to get through permitting, because the floodplain needed to be established. Then they were modifying the floodplain and that then would need to be recaptured and sent to FEMA. To change the FEMA floodplain hazard maps. So there, um. They, let's say, foundations need to be installed and all grading completed before FEMA will remove and remap the area, so they need to do all that work. And then provide a plan showing those changes to FEMA as part of their letter of map revision. The bridge to phase two, uh, they're planning construction next month. The footings for that need to be installed to a depth of twenty feet on both sides of the stream. And they'll be poured at sixteen foot depth. Um, then the steel culvert, which has already been permitted, uh, purchased and is in site. And the associated block retaining walls can be installed. And once they do that, it, it basically saying during this construction. That structural fill pile will be used and retired from phase one. Um, what we expect as a result of that is that that will also improve home sales. Uh, right now, you're, you're seeing. That isn't the most attractive, I think you can see what the future of the site's going to look like with the newly constructed houses. But you still see a very um, extensive ongoing construction site. So they really expect that that's going to help speed up sales. Phase two is sixteen homes, um, that area was recently cleared of the grubbing and some polling. Which has been underway, and again, that was conducted to allow the. Bridge to be completed and the soil to be transferred. And, let's see. So. That's ongoing. Once everything. Moves forward beyond completing phase one and constructing the bridge, I think, again, you'll see a lot more activity going on. And then you have the traffic signal, so. The traffic lights are up, everybody I think has noticed that, they're not activated. There are two reasons for that, um, the primary reason is that. Part of the project included widening the roadway right there in front of. Sawmill, so, and the intersection with Paquana Good Avenue, so you had a left turning lane. That would be signalized, and then you had a through lane that continued on Foundry Street. And you can't activate the lights until that widening has taken place. That can't happen until the light poles have been moved. It took National Grid quite a while to get back to the applicant on this. Um, those poles are going to need to be upgraded, so. The new poles will have new equipment and some of the receiving poles that aren't going to be moved. Also are going to have equipment upgrades, so the project of moving the poles and. Connecting them to the receiving poles is more extensive than what was anticipated. But the developer is hoping that they will be able to start the rough grading on the road widening. This, um, within the next month or two, and then having the. Poles moved and complete next spring with the lights activated next spring.
Excellent, thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Um, Board members, any comments or questions about Stephanie's updates?
Takes a long time to move poles.
Yes, oh, you know, they were selling houses and get ready, getting ready to construct. And it with, and grid had just started to install the power line. To the subdivision itself, they had temporary power on the site for equipment and that type of thing. But they, they still hadn't brought in the power. It was very frustrating.
Yeah, I, I remember when they redid Five Corners, I mean, we had telephone poles in the middle of the street for, it seemed like a year.
Yeah.
Well, they finally all got moved and everything got straightened out, it was, it was a long process.
Alan, you've, um. I don't know how long everyone's been here, Amos, I think, has lived in Easton for quite a while, I know Alan, you have, Mickey, I think you have. When I first started working for the town, Central Street was out because they were doing. I think it was a culvert repair, right, but the final straw, the thing that held up finishing the project was getting a pole moved. By National Grid, and it was, I worked for the town for at least a year, if not longer before that happened. Is my recollection, and it had already been quite a while that, um, that road had been cut off.
That was forever, was that, was it, wasn't the little bridge there or something, or the culvert?
Yeah, the culvert, I think we're the, yeah, the water flows under the road there, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, because our, our former chairman that I worked with, Chris Cohen, lived on that road, not too far.
That's right, mm hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that depends too, if they can figure out who owns kind of the, or who's responsible for the wires connected to the poles, because you can't just move things willy-nilly, you have to get all of the. Proper permissions and stuff in place, it's.
Yep, that is very true.
Cool.
All right, uh, do I have any final motions from the Board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Kit?
Aye.
Sigment?
Yep.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Adam?
Aye.
And Wolf is an I as well, uh, do you want to see us out, Amos, one more time?
Good night and good luck.
Ditto.
All right.
Good night, everyone, thank you, Stephanie.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Hope to see everybody around sometime.
Yep.
Definitely, definitely will.